This conference will now be recorded.
Good, should give you a thumbs up? Okay, I think we're good to go. Thank you.
As we were saying, what an automatic aid does streamline dispatch processes, 911, etc. No longer varies about city limits and orders, right? It doesn't shy away from responsibility, but instead of having part and set orders, you could have surrounding networks who will make it us the primary response and saying, "Okay, here you go, we have to be on scene before we call for help." If that 911 call comes in to Edwardsville and our resources are dedicated to something else, instead of the way it currently is, them calling us and saying, "We have another call from you. Who would you like us to dispatch?" They're looking at the map going, "Who's the next closest agency? And how can that response start?" So it saves minutes of unnecessary radio traffic and waiting for the process to start. When I got here in very early 2015, the agreement was we could not call for Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department, or any type of ambulance support because we've stood there for their own ambulance. So from day one, we've always staffed our crew assignment as our primary ambulance, and then backup, call staff, fire apparatus. We have records that show that KCK did not report until declared MCI level heavy duty to fire three five ambulances before they responded to the city. So for times back in that timeframe, they would call asking us who we wanted to have sent. So we had Danny Buezager, Leavenworth County EMS, and at that point in time, Johnson County Med Act. So you can imagine the ways in time that we've had. With this new proposal, and I want to use an example when we're serving work, we would just sit there and search for our response, get X number of pieces, and we'll see if there are any. And go for response, get this number of pieces. And if our crews are already dedicated, it takes away that, "Who do you want us to send or who should we call?" Dispatch follows along the communications plan and says, "It's the next closest unit." And they just automatically send them, and then notify if we've got another call along the community and we've started somebody. So if we can break eight units to start our initial first response, we can, and go from there. Next slide, Sean Paul. Now, there are benefits to all the players here today. The end winner for the entire benefit process is the citizen that is calling 911 when they're having the worst day of their life. That has always been the first and foremost process with the closest unit being dispatched. It is a efficient form of service delivery. It's the most efficient and effective manner possible. If you took an example of a fire in structure at 98th and River, and all of a sudden your dispatch is one fire department that's got a fire truck in the neighborhood, you've got to wait for somebody to get there and call for help. That is not the closest resources available. Our units would still be dispatched, but we know the station at 98th and State Avenue is also the next closest station. We'd have to be there about three minutes because of the close proximity to them. So at the end of the whole, throughout the entire process of automatic aid, no one agency loses their ability to control, dictate, or still guide their process of how the response goes. It just means that the end user, the 911 caller, the citizen, is the most beneficiary out of the entire process because it's putting that emergency service regardless of jurisdiction or magnitude at their disposal at the quickest amount of time possible. We know nationwide, our demands for services only continue to grow. We know that here at the local level as well. We are stuck with the process of doing more with less. From nationwide results from 1980 to 2003, the total number of responses in the fire service and emergency medical services have doubled. Medical aid responses in false alarms have quadrupled. Fire responses have dropped by 47% due to their excellent fire prevention program, and mutual aid calls have quadrupled due to staffing, budgetary constraints, and everything else. The fact that the population has also grown exponentially in that 30-year timeframe, and it has moved out to where city boundaries have expanded further, and still, the services are slowly starting to expand those services to catch up to it. It's been one of the identified points of the United States Fire Administration and the National Fire Task Force. In 2015, Edwardsville responded to almost eight hundred calls. In 2022, we ran over twelve hundred calls for service. That is a large percentage jump just in a community that only had between 2002 and 2010 a 400% population adjustment, according to the United States Census Bureau. It's also part of the best practices. Best practices allow us one for the closest portion of dispatch, but it brings us to compliance with federal industry standards. You've heard Mr. Bishop talk about NFPA standards. He talks about 1710, he talks about dispatch turnaround protocol. He's also talked about ISO or insurance services organizations and OSHA application. In 2019, we dropped our ISO rating from four to a two based on part of our mutual aid response and our responsive goods. This would further bring that to life. However, according to NFPA and most of our standards according to the United States Fire Services, the United States Fire Administration, we need at least 20 people on the scene before we start an initial fire attack. Currently today, we do not meet that requirement response protocol. It allows us more hands to initiate conflicts and multiple tasks immediately. And the biggest benefit for Windock County at this point in time is what it streamlines dispatch communications for all three agencies. Currently, if you were to go down to the Windock County Communications Center, you're going to sit there and realize we have three fire departments working on three different dispatch channels, three dispatchers sitting there. So the third is a fire dispatch, but Edwardsville tonight, and our automatic aid with Bonner Springs is called. They dispatch us, then they have to go over to Bonner Springs Channel, dispatch Bonner Springs units, and then if we get on scene and call for Kansas City, Kansas, we enjoy it, then they have to get over to Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas City, Kansas Channel and dispatch that under the proposed automatic aid agreement. All three of those radio channels will be merged into one. One dispatch channel for all three agencies. Then we'll be assigned out past hack channels depending upon the complexity of the fire, whether it's eastern or western side, which is getting a little bit further into the operational concepts. But the biggest thing is putting all the agencies on one radio channel so we're monitoring all three cities at the same time. So if we hear something kicking off in downtown Kansas City, they start going to the second or greater on fire, and they start pulling some west end resources. We know that we may be getting a call to go to 78th and Schwartz for a medical call because they are out of resources. Or we will hear when they are status zero and ambulances shut down, three engine companies to update and bring on all their ambulances because of the influx of ambulance calls. Also, the fact that it's necessary and it streamlines the dispatch procedure because again, we are only working with one dispatcher on one channel and not trying to bounce across three different channels. Next slide, Sean Paul, please. In 2016, we ran 671 calls and 286 other calls for service. Even though it's listed as fire, we did not have 286 fires in the city, or we would have a mysterious fire problem, we'd be very adjusted. 2017, we had an uptick. 2018, we had changes that occurred with our false alarms. We started a more stringent false alarm enforcement policy. The city had also created a false alarm fee schedule. We also readapted and worked more with our community partners, UG, on counseling for aging and personnel that were using the 911 system did not have 911 calls. So we reduced our call volume exponentially in 2018 due to some of those changes because we were anticipating that our services were getting used for non-essential calls. We were just tied up on situations that were completely preventable. And then in 2019, at the start and towards the end of the year is when COVID hit. And we noticed we had almost 100 run call difference in the ambulance service alone. The ambulance calls dropped because people did not want to go to the hospital because they didn't want to run the risk of being COVID. That is no worse than any other jurisdiction that I've talked to with chiefs in other communities across the nation. Yes, calls went up for the COVID relations. Most people drove to the hospital, but 911 calls for services in most places had decreased because of the COVID risk factor that people were scared. So then in 2021, we started coming out of COVID when we saw our spike again going back to pre-COVID times. And in 2022, we ran 893 calls for service on the ambulance side and 332 calls for service on the fire and the west side. During the fight 2022, we only ran 25 false alarms that were determined false alarms because of our enforcement and COVID enforcement fee schedule and us staying on top of false alarms. So we did not have a rise in false alarm rates. We did not have a rise in lift assists or other non-essential, non-urgent 911 calls if somebody was using the system. We had a larger influx of calls because the demographic of people calling 911 has changed. Now, because the backlog of personnel waiting at the ER, they think the quickest way to get to the hospital is going via ambulance. And they're finding out the hard way when we drop them off at the triage nurse desk and leave them out front, that the ambulance ride just costs you some money, but doesn't get you in the back quicker. Most of our calls in this community are still low-quality calls that are sick people that are demanding to go to the hospital and we take them. But we anticipated back in 2017 that we were following a long nationwide trend of about a 3% increase every year in the rise of fire EMS calls. This is kind of pretty evident in 2021 and 2022.
Chief, can I ask a question? Are these all Edwardsville calls?
These are, well, so in 2021, we made 104 calls, fire EMS calls to Bonner Springs. We made four calls in Kansas City, Kansas. In 2022, we made 114 calls in Bonner Springs, fire EMS, and we made two calls in Kansas City, Kansas, and seven calls to other locations.
Thank you.
There are some other slides that address this.
Okay, thank you.
Again, at the entire time that our increase went up, when we take out those mutual aid calls we had, we still saw about a 4% increase. The community of Bonner Springs saw a 10% increase in their call volume, and the city of Kansas City, Kansas, saw almost an 11% increase in their call volume. There's just been a large change in transition within the population of what constitutes a 911 call. The population of the older generation of I want to sit there and not go to the hospital via the ambulance has gone by the wayside. Everybody's been taught, has done a great job of preaching, "Get hurt, call 911." That is what it is for. So we've started to see where that is influencing into the rise of the call for data. Out of those call volumes, every one of those years for fires, we average about 14 fires in all these structures. Not all of them are complete total loss structures. A lot of times it's a small fire that's still on the stove top that we don't require any more assistance on. But nine times on average, 2016, we have to call real one structure fire because that is beyond our control of what our initial response capability is on. That is only a fire in a closed livable structure. We do not track a structure as an outdoor structure that we sit there and go into that data because that to us is not a change in demographics that causes adverse harm on somebody. Who's your garden shed? I'm going to come up there and I'm going to show them, we'll do that. But that is not a living space. We determine a structure fire based off of our living space and our data collection. And on average, like I said, that's about nine times per year that we have. In that timeframe, in 2017 and in 2023, we've had one fatal fire each and one of those two years. The automatic aid agreement, the amount of the damage done would not have changed the result of fatality, but we're still sitting there taking that risk because you have had fatal fire data that we've had to report. Next slide, Sean Paul. So there are concerns, different medical protocols. Our cells in Bonner Springs have the same medical director and the same medical protocol. We follow the Johnson County Med Act. Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department has a different medical director and a different set of medical protocols. How's that affect when we go to a call? Well, when Kansas City, Kansas, we were coming into here to deal with the medical call, we start our medical protocols and down our format, stay in our lane. And when their paramedics show up to take the transfer, they will switch them to their protocol and do the two B contracts. So if you're Mr. May is the demification or the limited liability, they pick up with their protocols, medical protocols go, and they keep going forward. So it's not this conflict with, "Oh, you did something that we're not used to." They understand that we have different protocols, they understand that they have different protocols. The whole goal is we get there first, we start within our protocol format. They show up, take over patient care and transport. They are now in their protocol format. The same thing if we go into Kansas City, Kansas to make a medical call, just like we would in Bonner Springs, we follow underneath our protocol and we do not question what they started. Our medics stay within their line of their medical protocol because that is what our doctor allows our paramedics or scope of practice to do. So each medical director signs what the paramedic's scope of practice is. Both medical directors, ours for us in Bonner Springs and Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department medical directors, have been briefed as part of this dispatch protocol or documents that's automatic aid agreement. And both of the doctors are confident in their protocols and are able to work together. We've worked on scenes before. So there is none of the concern about the dispatch or the medical protocol difference. There are different ways that both agencies, or all three agencies, send resources to medical calls. If you go to Kansas City, Kansas, most medical calls are going to get you a pumper and an ambulance sent out the back. The same with Bonner Springs, they're going to get you a pumper and an ambulance out the back. We do not send a pumper and ambulance out the back because we have to have always sat there and worried about that second call due to the way that we had to implement the EMS system in 2014. We do send a fire apparatus on five critical majors of call that are dispatched. That is any type of chest pain that is cardiac in nature, anything that is a stroke-like symptom, difficulty breathing, an unconscious, unresponsive, unknown condition, and then any major trauma. Those top five will get a fire truck and an ambulance from us here regardless. That will not change in the city of Edwardsville. The same happens right now. We have both of our ambulances out. The remaining crew will sit there and still respond, start the first response process while we wait on the arrival of an additional ambulance. Whether you have stuffed your toe, you have stomach ache, or you've sat there and sliced half your finger off because you've got a new set of steak knives, that process is still starting before we sit there and get the other ambulance around. That is not going to change. Kansas City, Kansas has somebody sat there and they go to status zero or cannot have ambulance on 78th and Schwartz, and they need an ambulance or the next closest thing available from here. Officer 20 is still going to make that response at our station, or one of their firearms will make that response to start that first response medical call. And then our ambulance will be sent to sit there and do a patient transport. This is not to sit there and mirror the way that any one agency sits there and employs their resources. We have sat there and decided right now that we are not going to sit there and dump both pieces unless it's a fire that is very close to the city limit because we are now looking at it while it requires two ambulances to bear. We still are going to pride ourselves in keeping our city covered with some of our resources as much as possible. We're not anticipating this large jump, we're going to be down to the lumber dale on every fire in Kansas City, Kansas. Logistically, it would be impossible for it to happen when they have over 140 and 18 stations every day their staff.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is the only thing that I was thinking of. I love this idea, I love this. But so is it possible to ask KCK? Because what I'm thinking is both of our, if our, both of our ambulances are out, say there's a wreck on I-10 and they need Edwardsville. Is it possible to see if a box from KCK can stage like at station six to get to our area faster if both of our ambulances are out?
Yes, ma'am. I'll kind of explain that when we close out, because that's part of the automatic vehicle locator to talk about in the process. But what it does is dispatch every one 500, I think they expect, or someplace in a second. The APOs will came and sit there and say where each unit is at. So as part of this plan, if units are being pulled from one particular area, there are designs and implementations to move either closer to city limits or but the agency know, such as Med 20, it's out of station 20. You may be going into Edwardsville because you're going to be the next closest medical incident something's going on. Like I said, there are going to be those rare occasions that we sit there and we possibly have both units going to another city. Bonner Springs or Kansas City, Kansas would not be for the medical call. It would be for the, the complicated rescue, the mass casualty, the destruction fire based off the plan. We're anticipating that between five and 10 times a year and really trying to plus it five times a year. Because when we go now to Bonner Springs on a call, I start calling back full-time personnel and I start calling back part-time personnel to bring them back into the northern city. When we would have this in place, stations that are not actively standing as part of that regional live response would also start moving closer to help provide protection for the existing gas recovery. So instead of just one station sitting there going, "Oh, we're completely," or we just put completed resources in Bonner, Edwardsville, we're just going to stay over here. Through the talks with the chiefs is when we would start doing station fills or moving closer to city limit lines and city apparatus to sit there and provide that coverage. Because again, everything here is driven towards the residents of Windock County, residents of Edwardsville, residents of Bonner Springs, residents of Kansas City, Kansas, especially in the western end where we are short of resources. But that is the first priority to pair them out every time. We sit there and talk about what a typical structural fire attack response plan is. I have that covered here in another couple of slides. It increases our minimum response capabilities, what will show up to a fire in the city of Edwardsville, city of Bonner Springs, and it mirrors very closely what KCK is implementing. So it provides a standardized response across the county. Now, if we don't need all those resources, we send them back home. But if we know we're going to be out for two hours and we have a spare pumper because it's part of that call, we can send them back to set on the city line or set in our station, they'll provide coverage for those weak areas. We sit there and talk about any differences in strategy and tactics. Part of that has been identified in the new plan that Kansas City, Kansas has introduced to their crews. We are actually wearing part of that because we were looking at redoing our attack procedures for our SOPs and policies. Do not mistake that they drove this down anybody's particular processes that we had to follow with us. The time that we sat there and started working with this at the chief's level, the idea of the plan is based off of this automatic aid agreement that if we're going to sit there and have the plan, then why not have everybody on the same shooting? That helps to standardize the entire fire operations. We don't have friction or conflict right on. We still manage to maintain control of our active policies and procedures to dictate our day-to-day operations, our day-to-day response even on that day to day. What happened to preparation training is even, a lot of it is going to be the face-to-face working together relationship. It started, it started last week when we planned, and it's going on throughout now. The biggest thing is being our three closest stations. Sixes, twelve, eleven, uh, you're headed up.
78th to 1070.
And get it out with them on a daily basis. We have been anticipating for over two months, daily video calls that cover the KCK's response. So there are bases to names, names, faces, personnel, affecting. But nine years go on here, I did not have access to parent level and staff that I had in my 90s for this. How will joint training be performed? Hosting agents, you've done some training with specialized courses such as the hazmat team, the technical rescue team at Kansas City, Kansas in the past years. That same influence format is going to occur on a quarterly basis or annual basis as far as the plan. It'll be hosted between the three cities. It's not going to be where we have to go simply to one location. The whole thought process is we're going to do a hazmat aside, we're going to find the highest risk hazards in Bonner. We have the highest risk hazards in Westport, Westside County, our representative official. We've been around here a long time. We've usually been the host facility, but we have the biggest risks. Same thing with some of the technical risks. So that will be shared across the power lane, but the chiefs, or the training chiefs, will step down and create the direct training plan of what they want to accomplish, working on crew cohesion, communication, and response efficiency for the three tactical priorities that we're going to be on that 3000 hold on. Verifiable patients, how is it going to sit there and be determined if they're across? Right now, it looks like we're running the Bonner Springs A3 time line. That's when I have the reduction from nine, but we're here. These don't, these don't mean you're going to sit there and reduce them. But still, it's just where we're the folks for assets on someone. But the same is as well here. I don't always have to stack that secondary one, 109 times. Where we are using our stacking on the vision, the combo of setting. So there are follow-ups that are going along in process. How will we prepare and cover two and one? How is there a reason that we're going to? That there are three ambulances, twelve, sixes, backup, three, that are going to help take off some of that pressure. This is on one of the, you know, the other. The system that we've got, those things, we've got, we've got their section that are open to eight, seven, and eight, so they can be used there on that. Sometimes you do, they're going to call, they're going to be called there. New places, that is. But we're going to anticipate some of those, we're going to follow up on some times. Change in the box, but right. What type of follow-up? We have a piece of, right. Now, totally agree with you. If this is the next program, we're going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be. Constantly, we have to stress on, because we're looking at, this is important, we have this call. Don't get back in the beginning of going at the, the, the non-work relationship. Over from your state, it's on, not. Again, verifiable patients, this will not reduce anybody's, staff's position. Bonner Springs, Springs, that is online and it's going to be still another three or four in the process. That will also sit there and bring some of processes and some of train. This dispatch protocol takes over 26 years to mount call and this is because of the people that are dispatched, we start tracking it on those weekends, we get out of the station.
Does Bonner have the equipment that we have or more or better or less? Are they staffed? Equipment-wise, are they in good shape?
Yes and no. So they have more pieces of apparatus. They are, they have a new ladder apparatus that you do in March of 24. They are looking at replacement vision, baby engine, so they are, they are, they are. They are from, yeah, one, one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. So that is, it's, 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 right now. So they're, they're about like their last. Apparatus counts, you do make the fact, but I, I got that long ago, council, where is the one apparatus? I know we have some of those, sorry. Thank you. Currently, we are dispatching the call models of a chief, a detective, that will, our agent and our agent, along with what may be staffed in Bonner Springs. This is the first name, Bonner, or part-time staff. This is a call from the 200 block of State and Plain Street back in August. Remember, the day of like 109 degrees. Our ambulance has transported from the previous fire that started an hour and a half fire to, and it's not cleared KU yet. So when that sergeant fire committed to 200 block of Plain Street, we have one agent, three personnel, myself, two from Bonner Springs, officer, vet, and chief. Two other agents. Our initial attack, we got on scene and it was reported, they were reporting kids could still be in the house, were nine people. Nine, that's four, until it takes four minutes for Bonner Springs to show it. Four. Four, that's not enough people to do that number with. Our goal is to provide that best plan, alright? There are times that we do have back-to-back critical medical calls with critical, critical call resulting in a kind of a five. The automatic aid process will streamline this and better serve our citizens when they might make their call for help or give us more resources when we sit there and get that call. Not everybody is going to have that large of an issue that it has in three minutes, Matt, especially on the times you sit there and look at most of our major critical medical conditions. So if we were to sit there and have one cardiac chest pain call occur here in Old Town, somebody has a cardiac chest pain call in the city of 102nd River View Drive, that's four and a half to six minutes to get up there. There's an ambulance sitting three minutes away at 98th and State Avenue. The whole principle behind the automatic aid is to make efficiency the priority for everybody. If we were to sit there and have both ambulances out, we're having a call for help from somebody else. We still have to do it even as it is currently, it just streams like that process. Problem, Sean Paul, next slide. But if we take what this new process would look like, that same fire, even if our ambulance was out, we would be at 21 personnel if that 23 on the initial response. National Fire Protection 1710 and 1720 standards call for 20 personnel within a matter of 10 minutes to be corralled on scene. We are seeing that with three people. However, we are getting five pieces of firefighting apparatus, two ambulances, at least two chief alters and a safety compartment that would be included. We don't need all of it, we send the non-necessary pieces home. That August, we sat there and ended up having four pieces of Kansas City, Kansas because it's 109 degrees, you get a fire in for about 17 minutes. And then the heat index just makes it so unbearable that you have to start worrying about heat stroke and heat stress that it fires. But three minutes makes a difference. But three minutes makes a difference. In December twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty, we had a fire at ninety-eighth and River. It took us four minutes and fifty-nine seconds to get on scene. We lost a council member's house because it was already through the roof and running the roof line that night when sixes was in the house, not a quarter mile away. That, sit there and put that unit on scene almost a solid three minutes before we would've got there and could've made a difference. Don't know if it would've should've. But that isn't talking about the efficiency in the process of it doesn't matter anymore. It wouldn't matter which chief shows up. It's the first chief officer starts making those tactical decisions. It is removing barriers that have been a problem for over eight years in this community. When we sit there and talk about large fires, that was one of those that we have a lot of resources to decide who's going to help. But we also had a large fire in office back in December of two thousand and three. They required thirteen pieces of apparatus coming in here on the hundred and each way call. We were out for seven and a half hours on the call. We had volunteered departments from Lenmore County coming in to help staff the station to ensure we had coverage back here. They're few and far between, but the process of the aid is not something that is not unknown to everybody around here. It helps make us more efficient at our call. Next slide, please, Tom Call. So if we look at the medical call in the same process. Currently, we have one medical call. And we just got a two-person ambulance out on a low acuity call. We would sit there and, and take our remaining crew from the, the pumbers, put it into an additional two-person ambulance and send them to the next call. If that crew, all five are on a critical cardiac or one of the top five calls, myself or Dave Millen or somebody else is coming to help make that call, and we're calling for an ambulance for the next closest provider. If they're not answering up or on the back, dispatch calls the captain on the engine and says, we got another call in your community. Who would you like us to send? We still have to dictate who we're sending even if we say the next closest. Same concept, sit there and allow us, if we looked at seventy-eight and Schwartz, and it would be a pumper twenty and a KCK match. KCK was down to status one, that KU are not as close. It would only be us having to send our two-person team over to Kansas City. And I'll make that call set here. We would not have to send our pumper and our agent over. Because that is the closest. Yeah, we sit there and look at one, two, or five, one, eight, so, but. Yeah, those things, and this power stuff, that was still firing. I'm convinced we're firing, make that, start, ELS, at least ELS carry. Now, somebody, somebody, all eight providers, so every, all our. And then dispatch, not even passing, wasting time. These students are walking, who's the next one to sit? Medic six is sitting there at a hundred and fifty-nine seventy-two, come downtown in KU and are basically looped out right there. They're getting the call. It's just going to be downstream like, because that, 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 that's what, doesn't happen, so. And that call comes in and talks with on that CAD, that's kind of like the street call. Who's the next one? It would be insane if we sit there and had any other calls, but having that or a while or anything else that would have carved this down from the ground. Your part of it, we're going to bring this while the test. In the past, we sit there and play that test. This will just sit there and automatically, and, 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 and. Cat automated jack said, does all of them, does that, 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 that. Father call, secretary go over, and, 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 and. Just like you did sit there and go back two winters ago on the seventy-six, seventy mile an hour, which won't come. And KCK had all their rash, their crashes tied up on one incident, a three, four, thirty-five, burning five, five, dot, county, they had another decker on call drive. It would automatically highlight and say, Edwardsville's the next closest one, send it. So it's not just call specific. CAD is going to sit there and eliminate a lot of the guesswork on dispatchers of saying, here you go. It provides a more robust situation for the response across the entire county. Next slide, please, Tom Call. How is this going to change our call volume? It's going to change, yes and no. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to make thousands of calls and we're going to sit there and come back and say, oh my God, we need to have more staff. I'm going to break that down here in the next whole slides. Will we run every call in Kansas City? No, we are going to be responding in Kansas because it's going to sit there and drop the city lanes, just the same as we run into Bonner Springs. If we are going to Armored Dale for a fire, we have got some very big problems in mine, dot county, you've got a huge issue going on. We may at those point in time, if you have large fires downtown, get reallocated to cover parts of Station twenties and the city of Edwardsville. And move, sit there, still provides maybe have a larger response area. Our goal again is to still always have coverage here. The same goes like we did in two thousand and fifteen. We have a long-term incident again in another large industrial complex here. We start calling in another resource to come back in and back. It does not take away our ability to backfill our, our time and full-time employees. The other benefit is Kansas City, Kansas has over a hundred employees on duty every day. So the, the realm of we're going to every medical call on Legend's and every medical call in Piper is not practical. There are times that they're status zero on ambulances and they start moving their resources to play into status. The same thing goes into them, but if we are leaving Providence with a patient and they're status zero and they get a call at seventy-six in the state for a traffic accident, we can get set there and put on that response card for a traffic accident because we're the closest to the center. Dispatch still covers if we're there, but they are at their status to where they're going to sit there and cause that. Predominantly, the old existing Delaware township that runs everything from about Station twenty through here, um, is what's going to sit there and kind of disappear and be the one response area. We were running into every call in Bonner Springs. We have not, never been the primary response agency in Bonner Springs. Everybody's like, oh my gosh, we often make all the calls in Bonner Springs. Hundred and fourteen times last year, hundred and four times the year before. Prior to that, the bad worker relationships, they weren't calling a whole lot, they were calling KCK. When you sit there and look in the city and an agency that had over fourteen hundred calls on, on their side, we are less than ten percent of their call volume. We've had to respond to them. So, no, I would not say we're anywhere closer to the primary response. We are getting calls when they're in the same boat we are. They've got no ambulance in there. They were an all-volunteer agency with no staffing on fire trucks until this year, which was a part-time model. So when they would have back-to-back calls, somebody was having to help them out. Remember, a hundred and sixty-nine times last year, we'd have called for somebody else and we didn't sit there and put on all that we had. They've aided us just not as a safe fare amount, which as Mr. Matisse described earlier, they're aware of that, their new company chief was aware of that. They have made the commitment to hiring people to have support fairness in there. They are looking at, they very similar follow-up, staffing is what we do. But again, right now, they are only one ambulance in service, we've got no one in shot. As we start getting age on items and everything else. Same times you can have, twenty people sit in the station. You cannot put this patient in a fire truck, take it possible without having ramifications, take more EMS. If you don't have ambulances that are in service because mechanical issues, there are going to be those times. But, next slide, please, Tom Call. We've given those numbers before, I'm sorry, it was a hundred and fifteen, not a hundred and fourteen. Eighty-five of those were for EMS, fourteen traffic accidents, sixteen fires, twenty-six were canceled around. We anticipate a decrease of about sixty-five calls per year going out of Bonner Springs because of this. Now, we're anticipating about an increase of fifty calls per year, looking at the Western data provided by Kansas City getting inspired from it compared to this two. And that's because of some areas along four thirty-five, Holiday, the bridge, I seventy, four thirty-five to almost K seven that they cover, that they would have to send resources from further down that we would be closer to cover. So some of those numbers that we look at there, that is, that is an estimate that I have pretty confident saying that we are not looking at hundreds, we're not looking at thousands of calls, we're looking at about fifty.
I, I just have a point of clarification because you said this. Do you mean that, that this, the implementation of this particular mutual aid will decrease about sixty-five?
Calls, yes.
Is, is that in addition to what Bonner Springs is ramping up the full-time service as well? Or is it just simply that one agreement is going to make this?
Well, no, I think, I think the, uh, combination of the staffing and the agreements was a piece about sixty-five calls. I, I'd like to come back in here and say, oh, oops, I was with my number wrong, it's a hundred and twenty call, right? But, you know, that's yet to be seen because of various factors. But like I said, looking at staffing and just looking at where the calls, where we made in Bonner Springs, that I think, I think that sixty-five is going to be the, the best number one seat with the, the degree. So you're talking about almost more than half of, of the call volume going out.
I think it's a good, though, that if you drive up and down four thirty-five, there's, there's two jurisdictions there. There's Edwardsville and KCK, you know, kind of hops. And so when you think about these calls, the number, the variations, what you'll see is we have a number of accidents out there where our police department, for example, is dispatched first and then they're kind of trying to figure out where it's at because people who are calling nine-one-one don't know exactly where they're at, what town they're in. So they're just sending all of that. So we could see an increase, that we're going to be the closest on, say, to K thirty-two and four thirty-five. So that's a good point to point out that the, we're going there anyway, but we may be the lead in, in all of that on a pretty regular basis because if it's done by GIS and automatic vehicle locators, they're going to say, you're the closest one sent out there. Doesn't mean KCK will come, and they usually do, but that's, that's, you should expect that. So there could be some variations.
Also, just to tie into that, on the east side of town, where I worked all the time, we ran with Missouri like that all the time. Nobody knew on I, I've had, nobody over by the Guadalupe Center. They didn't know, and it was like that at the KU. So it, it's a common occurrence. People don't know where they're at.
Ninety-four street is another perfect example because, and we had a head-on collision, but on narrow roads. Who would they send it first? Well, we're going to go with Edwardville and we're going to send KCK. Right, Tim?
Yes, sir. Next slide, Tom Call. Like I said, we're anticipating this, this slight decrease and slight increase. Now, it'll factor in though. My recommendation is to always consider it. We're going to always look at a three percent gradual increase just due to the trend of nationwide responses. That, that's going to factor in there for us. How many times are they going to come help us? Million dollar question. Based off of the miracle data last year and the year before, when we looked at it, we were averaging about thirty-nine times we called Bonner Springs and six times that we called Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department. We almost hold those numbers to be a neutral response. We don't anticipate that that's going to change that much. Because if we have a large spike of outgoing calls that we're calling imminent, then I need to relook at some program or some process that's built on our side. Now, like I said, in average, we have about nine sergeant fires require help a year out of the fourteen plus or more. That's not those, every couple of years, you have that bad rash year where you get fifteen or sixteen fires. That's not the fact we've just come out of another year, or one of the first years of perceptible drought. We've been in a drought status for four years in the state of Kansas. The forecast is we're going to have a wet weather. Next year's summer forecast is not going to get any better. The, the vol, the volage and, and the fuel that are on the ground are going to dry out rapidly next spring and it's only going to get worse. So those numbers could actually be based off of what we've looked at. Our times that we have them, it's going to sit there and probably have a slight increase just based off of what Mr. Matisse said. It's the areas of four thirty-five, ninety-four, K thirty-two. We already have the one-up response areas. And then there's going to be the four thirty-five and I seventy-four, which is notoriously been one of those that's favored more towards KCK than us. That may get cleared up a little bit more because of the fact that we've got agencies going to coast size down to get on four thirty-five. So there is some justification. I would like to say that, you know, we're talking about a hundred or less a year. It's not going to sit there and cause me great concern. If it was anything more than that, um, then that's when me and two other chiefs are sitting down going, what, what's changed? But it's not the thousands that I've heard. Right, I've sat there and also think, oh, you know, going to KCK. Well, yeah, they make fifty-six thousand calls a year. That doesn't mean that we're taking a third of them or a quarter of them or anything else. Because when you look at their heat match, the majority of their responses are from Fifty Second Street on East into what is Old Town and a part of downtown Armored Dale, Turner and all of that. So that is where we sit there and realize that we're not going to have that huge of an influx in the calls in Kansas City, Kansas. Next slide, please, Tom Call. Forty-five times what we've averaged calling for eight, because of how they're everywhere.
So you mentioned four thirty-five and seven. So we could be pulled up into that, that larger situation. There's our people that make you buy, right? So maybe if they take five or five or half or nine, then we may or may not have resources to stay that would answer all of them, such as the hard tack Jackson. We'll have a pumper truck, which we've tried over the years to staff and for the ALF to get a theremetic on a pumper truck. So he kind of mentioned that. That's possible. We've also talked about, right, we're advancing our EMT level from basic to advanced. So they can perform higher level of EMS care in the field. So that pumper building is a resource that may or may not have already been committed, say, to that accident of out of town, right? Say East, well, the home might be committed in that particular accident, but it likely would be Warner Springs. So then they would say, okay, the closest to the Jackson hard tack would be Warner Springs. That's the way you visualize and how this would work is that he may be helping here, but we also get help on the east. Visually, I want you to see that by that. That's kind of how that, unless there's a big major event that had a school up all over. There are seven, eight, and that's kind of it. Those are highly unusual, right? This would be more routine, we're committed to outside, say, I seventy-four, thirty-five, and accident. We didn't have, hopefully, the resources without otherwise committed, coming into town to take care of the next closest unit. And I don't know if we've mentioned that, I'm trying to go through, this is a point of clarification to emphasis. We, we're committing, if we pass this in picture, committing to supplying the resource that we have available. And it's still up to the chief to decide that, is that right?
Yes, it, it's in the policy, just may look at, um, and did the contract. Still pinned on what our staff, we can't support that front. But saying, oh, when it will be, it's like the bottom test, I don't have a standard recovery, we don't take it off. We are committed to the hard tack Jacksons, Mr. Reese said, and say, ten-car pile of four thirty-five and seven. And if we've got five people in the deck, we're gonna lose a second L provider to ride in with our engines. Um, then it's gonna be diverted, then they can't sit there and call the next one down and maybe quicker be the Warner Springs to come over there and come back. Because our resources are committed. Or if we are dealing with a situation here, such as a smaller fire, which probably was not called all the way on, in that situation, we're still taking care of that original problem. Now, if that original problem, Jackson's coming in from hard back, and it's, they're stable, but the pumper's in the hard tack. Everybody said this is a very low minor duty call, I'm fine, then that pumper could break and they'll help that call. So we still have that flexibility, though, that could, just because the response of our calls, or if we can't commit to it that long time. It's a simple, we cannot commit to it, they will walk out of line. All right, so, bar some needs. Everyone's like, oh, here we go, now the chief's gonna come in and walk in, more hands, more bunch of money. So, most of everything that we have is covered in here except for identified in the heat wave plan. How do we try that, what are you talking, automatic duty? That is the biggest expense we have in that, in hardware song for addition. So, our CAD system is set up. They bought it from Tyler Tech, Kansas City, Kansas. They bought books and their CAD system and our RMS, all of that, for several hundreds of thousands of dollars. And incorporated automatic duty program. Steve Edwardsville did not buy into that system that long time. We were confident that we had, right, RMS, we had, this was right before I got hired here, um, and everything, and I was still staying by my decision. Needs management, we made that one time, not to go down that route. Our current RMS system has interface with the CAD system. We use technology to build our RMS and our CAD operations in the field. Our biggest problem is the setup, we just need to have some software and hardware upgrade. We are almost at the end of life on tablets that we're gonna sit there and start identifying in twenty twenty-five, replace out. We'd like to try to use some off the buttons on in twenty twenty-four implementing this. That is about a ten thousand dollar expenditure, replacing seven tablets across the board with the software. With a thousand dollar a year annual fee that integrate into the CAD dispatch software downtown with power tech analysis. Dave, am I correct?
Correct.
All right. That is the basic expenditure that we have committed to our act. We have current tablets. We have current hardware that is almost at the end of this. I regret that we didn't have a better idea with this when we put the twenty-four button together to identify. But we do have our providers that can be used on a technical piece for that button. Now, the unit redesignation, the dropping our three-digit buyers, got two-digit buyers, Warner Springs has done all that. That is a five thousand dollar spend, and it will be done sometime over the next calendar year. The biggest headache is the re-classification and reprogramming of annual radios, and that one is free. That is managed by BP, that is a matter of us bringing them out on station and then plug cables into the radio, just every question. Template that's being used by KCK and us in Barrow has been agreed upon on our means of the ad back in September. Last month, the chief said, what is the radio main news replying to all the channels? Like I said, we're, no more freedom of dispatch channels, no more twelve different tasking channels, one group tonight. We're back down eight task channels, one dispatch channel, and it's just a matter of us reprogramming that one side. Dar, Dar, Darrell, BP has maintained it as a day, and it has worked, it's worked, it's done right out here. Now, the implementation data was implemented in January, we will be on an open system until one January. How do we do that? Program the radios ahead of time, but our existing template for the second bank is already gonna stay the same. When we programmed the radios the last time, on main dispatch channel, always going on the second night, the first radio channel, we got turned off the track. So all we would be doing is working off that second night, before payday, on the morning of January first, if this were to be approved, we'd have five calls. That is where we are looking at, our basic specialty, either hardware or software.
Reprogramming the radios, does that create a challenge for communicating with our police at all? Or is that just switching the channel to get to them?
I would love to sit there and talk to my cops, but they're on a strict ban, I'm gonna get here up to talk to them. So usually when I sit there and have to have a face-to-face police officer, I go walk.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they usually hear for us, we sit there and you'll put them on the radio, tell them to come up over to us. And ninety-nine percent of the time, the majority of our officers are on the scene with them. Uh, as soon as they see a chief officer or a captain, they are outrunning right up to us. They are, that was instant, we'll be sitting there and say, here you go, because of the challenges that are created.
Is that a, is that by design, Tim, or is that by, is that an equipment challenge? By my design?
Well, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm on our channel, yeah.
Depending on the template, you can do a mutual aid channel.
Yeah.
In your storm.
Right.
Just about a quarter of the day, everybody turns to nine, eight, five, whatever.
Kind of a incident, like a six p.m. stop.
Yeah, but, you know, you have to tell them, it's open, it's Thursday, right here, so. Whether it's those channels, either on six, or on three, or four, or five, or six, or seven, or eight, or nine, or ten, or eleven, or twelve, or thirteen, or fourteen, or fifteen, or sixteen, or seventeen, or eighteen, or nineteen, or twenty. So, communications interlocutively between our officers and firefighters, never going to issue. Um, in two thousand fifteen, we had a fire that did have kids in Kansas City. And up till even here in, uh, August, that is a, just like our man, changing banks and selling, he's getting our check. Having everybody on three K dispatch channel, we can sign to pack them, we can sign to file. Puts everybody on the same bank, so they don't have to sit there and, you know, four rounds, I sit there and play. Love hand, shake radio channel, don't gather back there, murder the novel, but everybody's on that. Again, um, I will take any questions, definitely, I hope this is answered. This, as far as creating peace and concern, the biggest danger in this entire process is the potential of blind dot county.
Chief, I just had a couple of questions, um, that you probably have a quick answer to, I may have just not heard it right or not quite followed along. Um, so, uh, the example of K thirty-two and four thirty-five, say, there's a medical emergency, not a fire, but, uh, ambulance call. If, it's, it's in Kansas City, Kansas, but Edwardsville's the first response there. When Kansas City, Kansas shows up, do they take over or do we keep that and have to go sit at the hospital with that patient? Let me go a little bit further, let's say eighty-eight, 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 K thirty-two.
Yeah, so KCK, so.
Yeah, so we, we get there first, does KCK take over when they get there or do we have to go to the hospital?
Here. So. They, are they glad?
Let's just call it an ambulance, like it's just an ambulance call, no fire truck.
All right, we go there, five, you know, and they need to take their. So, they do the painting. If the patient does not sign a release or say, we can't, you see that transport all the way from that scene to drop off to hospital, you know, your release. Get all the information, then go back.
Okay, so we, so say we have one of our ambulances with that patient, say they're Providence from eighty-eight, K thirty-two. And then we have another ambulance call at, I don't know, case seven and K thirty-two. So we're the first response, for whatever reason there, we go there, so we have two ambulances out. And this is kind of, um, I think is what Councilman Adcox was asking. At that point, do we have, in the mutual aid or, or agreement among the chiefs, that someone's sliding closer from Kansas to Kansas, slightly physically moving?
Seeing where resources are being pulled, KCK does it now, and first, who's ambulance is because of going down, especially their population, it's always blocked. They would start seeing that anomaly start here, ice storm, whether it been in Fort Southern Center, having those two cities. Then they would start looking at where is their next course of spring. They may sit there and call pumper twenty's house and say, you're standing down the hall, you're helping the ambulance, and start heading towards four thirty-five, K thirty-two, to cover, back to. Still, Edwardsville gets back to the hospital.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a sliding process apparatus all across the ground.
So they would be physically moving closer to respond to our call?
They would be moving physically closer. They, it's already cleared, it's been Providence for ten minutes, and knowing that our average time of Providence is fifteen, twenty minutes, and then we get the call to K seven and K thirty-two, and take our second ambulance over there. It may have that determination, dispatchers, like they've been on the clock now for ten minutes, got a problem, are you clear? Oh, yeah, we're clear. Then it may just be, pumper twenty's be prepared, and they may call, Edwardsville stand by at your station. Because, you know, you take, there's just so much time to sit there and get the city by, and we're already back in the city, there's no problem. Now, if we took that same patient, KU?
Yeah.
And you're talking about a seventeen, twenty minute response time back here, then we would sit there and see where they would sit there and start moving in towards the city.
Okay, that was my concern, is those examples where we're kind of out and then maybe someone in Old Town has a heart attack and then we have to get to them sooner. So I can see where that would benefit.
What part is, we have self-care, is you're gonna get up and go, God, I'm set on somebody, see them inside, whether you like it or not. Sit there, stand by for your station. That's just part of, yes, the whole design is just like Johnson County, because it's a net act. You start sliding pieces around, but you don't have any one particular area that is undercover, there's a cover tissue going on.
Okay, and so I see that definitely, um, bringing peace of mind to folks at the north end right now. If their, my understanding is, it doesn't matter, even if we have ambulances in Edwardsville, if a medical emergency comes out at ninety-eighth and Riverview, then sixes will be responding first, anyway, because they're the closest. Um, the other question I had, and this might be a little bit too much into the weeds, on dispatch, if we're going down to one dispatch. I've called in Missouri before and been on the phone, um, on hold twenty minutes before I talk to an actual dispatch person. Are we gonna get so bopped down with KCK calls that we have a longer wait time to get to dispatcher?
Right now, one of the benefits of blind dot county is the whole is limited, you have an hour one dispatch, but if you call home, blind dot county, you get police fire, and that's where that's where you first. You don't have the backlog, Kansas City, Missouri. So nine-one-one's is supposed to automatically roll over, all the ambulance call. However, in blind dot county, there are no less than four additional call pressures to bring in the incoming nine-one-one. And then you have a student for fire dispatchers set up on one side, and I think it's up to six or seven police dispatchers on the other side. So, the problem is, where I'm short on the actual dispatcher side, is the calls are stacked enough like they are in Kansas City, Missouri. They're getting them out and over to the other side. So, three dispatchers on, on one call on the radio, then two other dispatchers sitting there dealing with other calls, coming in, taking notes, routing them out, saying, this is not an emergency, you have anything else. So it's not that in this nine-one-one scenario, taking a call in and saying, oh, here you go, what happened?
Yeah, I think the, uh, the point he was making was that they're not reducing the number of dispatchers. What they're doing is re-templatting the radio so that there will be a central dispatch for all the fire apparatus that's there, agents, whatever. But those other bodies will still be there, the call takers will still be in place. I didn't understand that there would be any reduction.
There's overdose.
It's just, I think they're talking about trying to hire on. It's synthesizing rather than segmenting how they're dispatched now on a physical radio.
And so you don't see any concerns with that or, or radio traffic?
No, ma'am, because the way, the way the dispatch chairs are set up, is you have primary dispatchers that deals with all three radio channels.
Okay.
You have a second chair that deals with incoming calls, and a third chair of the staff that deals with incoming calls. Still only got one person talking on all three radio channels. That one person now only has to do one channel, and one tack channel, you know, or two tack channels. The two, three other people are still there to take some of that call volume off. That eliminates the stack of calls coming out of one center. Because if you go down there and it isn't at one o'clock in the morning, and you sit there, you may get five calls at the same time to the same instance. And sooner or later, go, oh, well, you know, ninety-eighth and Riverview, there's a fire, why is there? It's bound to understand, we've already got confused about that second or third person tagging up, picking up that next one, it's not backbopping on the initial nine-one-one call. All they're doing, police fire angles, what's your emergency, rounding to two, two sides of the building. And then that allows primary dispatchers to only concentrate on talking to the uniform radio that are routed, you know, resources, you know, the ICs. Other two that are not on that radio, take some of that pressure off of that. Uh, so that has always been at template, it's just reformatted, not re-sensitizing or reducing the number of dispatchers.
Thank you.
So Chief, who ultimately makes the decision on who goes where? Like, let's just say that we're stuck down here because of a train, and there's a heart attack at one hundred and ten in Riverview. And the nine-one-one call goes in to dispatch, and does dispatch say, there's a train in Edwardsville, we can't get them up there? How's that gonna work out?
We're gonna, just like we do now, dispatch, we're hung up by a train, that call comes in, or even as soon as we have hung up my train, they are going to that train's closest unit.
Which would be KCK.
KCK and I'm gonna start.
And then the other thing I was gonna wait was, there's gonna have to be some pretty big changes at the nine-one-one dispatch center, correct?
Most of those have already been started, uh, with the process. Uh, I'm gonna let Dave kind of answer that real quick, because he's got. So, uh, here's your first question.
That's right, be a good idea.
Yeah, I've got a lot of questions. This is, this is kind of sprung on, I, I got this Friday, I think Thursday or Friday, and I'm gonna, I mean, I like what I'm hearing. I like everything about what I'm hearing.
So, so to answer the question about the dispatch, that's gonna be built into the system. So the curated dispatch system has to be, and then they apply polygons in a mapping system to those rules. So they say, uh, if our fire truck is in the station, they would apply an eighty-second delay, because on average, the national average is eighty seconds for us to get out of the door. If there's a fire truck and roll out of the station. So it automatically applies that eighty-second delay. And we get on the radio and say, if you have a train delay, you run the numbers and give dispatch the average number of seconds that were delayed by the train. So once it applies to that, it would pop up to the dispatcher and say, now the next closest units are ready to meet this unit or that unit. Um, so whereas for today, until this is passed, uh, we would have to make that decision. And it may not be consistent every single time, the computer will apply those rules automatically. Um, and with the vehicle location, with it knowing where the units are, uh, it'll apply that across the board every single time. Uh, as far as the other stuff with the dispatch changes, we've already reprogrammed a lot of radios, uh, we've already started the process of redesignation. Uh, we just need to.
Ultimately, what's that gonna cost Edwardsville? Is it gonna cost us ten, eight fifty, and five thousand? Or, I mean, I can't see us just getting that for free. I mean, what's it gonna cost our tax, taxpayers?
That is the actual cost.
To do that.
Right there.
And that's something they should have had years ago, frankly.
Yep, and like I said, we constantly buy technology every year. If we'd have known that this was going to come in back in June and April, maybe we'd start the budget process, we'd have seen the technology line of ten thousand, eight hundred dollars to buy the upgraded hardware. Our current tablets are anywhere between three and six years old, so we try to replace them out between that four and five-year mark. Thing is, is if we're gonna do it by piece, we don't learn to when they come off the line, like we currently trying to do now, just spread it out at all times. And just put new technology, software at one point in time in the hand, and we can get it to that price right there. Five thousand dollars for unit redesignation, that can be absorbed by our normal progress.
No, I like, I like that.
But that thousand dollar annual repayment within the CAD system would be added on to just our normal contractual services every year in the budget process.
This entire expenditure is easily absorbed under three-plus million dollars.
No, I can see that, and, you know, I'm really happy pleased with what I'm seeing here. You know, you always have to be a little cautious when you see something so cheap, but, you know, you're really getting it for that.
And it's, that was the, the, the big concern that we had, because, you know, we did not take power tech, CAD, computer software, and all that they wanted to. I mean, Warner Springs spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for, KCK spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for. And we opted not to, we had a separate RMS system, upgraded it differently. Uh, we've got a more robust RMS system that works well in CAD, because there's sometimes bigger parts that are out. Our special programs, things that are, the same that our RMS, where they're doing different programs, calling different brands, trying to get it taught to CAD. So, for us, we're just down to hardware, software, and that's all that is. Um, like I said, all of our other technologies, hardware, and wireless, all that, we've kept up the brand, we kept up the budget replacement longer. So that's why that budget price is that low that it is to that point.
Uh, I was looking into, uh, like the reimbursements, uh, basically, uh, our people get hurt in KCK, that's protected by us, right? And vice versa and all of that, so I, I think. And vice versa and all of that. So I, I think I read in the contract where all that, pretty good. What about the reimbursement for the ambulance, like the insurance for transporting?
We bill the patient. So if we transport, like we do with a Bonner Springs resident, we transport a Bonner Springs resident, we're taking the monitoring residence and the patient. Submit to our billing company. They're going, they're insured, they're going that patient threat. So we get that money back through the billing process and the collection. It's the same, though, we're not doing KCK, so we're not paying the same responsibility for this amount of money. It's just saying that they can come over here, they can support our patient. It's, it's their line up that they're billing, they're collecting.
That sounds pretty good to me. And the only, the only other thing I was gonna ask, and it probably doesn't mean anything anyway, who's the boss? If, if your first responder in KCK, you take control of the situation, then another chief from KCK comes in. Are you in the boss or does that transfer to who came in? I, I mean, that might not be the question. I'm seeing a smile. That might not be a question that we want.
No, because it's actually been addressed by their chief more than once. Saying that it's occurred even when they've had the situation over here in the past and they challenge it, it's 40 of us. By the NIMs model, which you have addressed to, it's the first arriving fire official. 99% of the time, if it's a captain or a lower that, you know, shown there, it's already been told. You're gonna answer to that chief, and that's just the way, you know, show the same respect that you show any chief around here. They are qualified, capable and very well educated for job. It was quite funny because Ruben sat there and said, you know, well, I've known him for almost 25 years. So I've known him longer than you, you know, I've known most of you guys. So there is that concept over there. What we've addressed to is, is we sit there and we get there first, just like they were sitting there bringing a battalion chief over, six or over here. We're taking an approach where we're not getting too far away from them, saying, okay, here you go. Thoughts, views or anything, especially them over there. If it's back in their area and I might have started fire operations, it'd be no worse than any other I A M getting replaced by a senior chief above me if I was a battalion chief. This is what I've got. This is what I started with. This is the resources I've got dedicated. This is what I've got wrapped. You want it, you're gonna be finished following this through. If I make something over in their area quicker than they do, this is what I've got. This is what I've done. This is what your resources are. This is what's on the road, whether or not. And same thing that occurs even when I go over the bottom. This is what I started and a lot of times it's just one of those, you started it, both of them, we're gonna take hands off the pot. That has been adjusted on multiple times through the conversations, not only at our level, but I've heard from the reduced staff several times, command staff, in coordination.
Those types of things are addressed in their joint training. There's gonna be more from what, what the indication was, their life chief.
Yes, sir.
So that, they're gonna be more incident command system and all those things, fairly universal, are gonna be training together. They'll know the names, the bases, that sort of thing. And I think that would come pretty.
No, I see. That, that sounds like a good deal. And getting radios together sounds pretty good, too. I think we dealt with that with the police department on pistols at one time, where everybody had this, you know, where you could exchange clips and all that kind of stuff. I think that's all the questions I've got.
I just have a few. What is our current mutual aid and automatic aid with Bonner?
What is it or what was it?
What is it right now? I mean, short ver, I, is there, is there a short version or is there?
Section number five of our agreement, which was passed in December of 2018. It's section number five and some of the other ones as well, that were at least considered as the same thing. In addition to the assistance provided pursuant to the agreement, for significant emergencies, the parties may agree to provide automatic aid to each other according to policies and procedures mutually prepared and adopted by the chiefs of each department. And they have done what they've got together as they said, okay, well, when we have this, for example, there's a structure by our Bonner Springs. They, if there's, our response, our apparatus response is, we're going there, we're getting dispatched along with this, and vice versa. So that, that's the thing there. Now, if their ambulances, for example, go different than ours, are not, are committed somewhere else and they're not available, then we would go run that EMS call. And that's all done through dispatch and requests, of course, mutually request. Or it can be done automatically. And there were policies and procedures put in place over the years since 2018 that kind of addresses those things. So no ambulance, there's a heart attack, post office in Bonner Springs. And so what we do, they were not available, our EMS service went there and they took care of it. And all the things that you asked, we made a response, it was somewhat automatic dispatch, and we billed the patient. So that's kind of, it works very similar, it's somewhat similar to what you just heard about the patient line. Those, those kind of themes are run through these consistently through these mutually agreements. This would just add Kansas City, Kansas.
That's what I, okay.
And closest, right? Who's ever closest. So that's really the key change is, is that we're going on the fire calls, vice versa. And we're going on these ambulance calls when we're needed. And that's, that's gonna be very consistent. Now we're just expanding and KCK not only going there, but receiving as well.
So the biggest change is KCK's in the mix now? Okay, because on the page nine, it states Bonner Springs requests of Edwardsville and Edwardsville requests, that stays the same. So I just wanted to refer, what is our current agreement? So nothing changes there?
Nothing changes with that, other than again, KCK is close to the primary, if they are close, we're, that's right, because they're all.
All our runs out there?
Yeah, there's, there's really two problems here, is that we have to mutually aid, where we say, would you come and help us? And vice versa. Or you're already going, right? Because there's some automatic technologies involved, right? They say, you're close, go. And we're gonna save the patient or do whatever, right? So that's, that's really the two problems. Mutually aid, we're asking, right? Vice versa, exchanging services. And the auto piece, right? Right, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Am I on line? Uh, is that we, we are being dispatched directly because we've agreed that if we're the closest unit, there's probably limited availability of anyone else, we're gonna go there.
And if I understand it correctly, doesn't it shorten the response time when it's automatically?
Yes. Because if you're, from estimates right now, nationwide trend is anywhere between a minute and a half, two minutes. Shortened down, just the other serial traffic, asking dispatch, it's vulnerable and stuff and everything else. Like I said, being over here with us, just the way the current dispatch situation is, it's gonna shave 90 seconds or more. That is, that is the shoot, uh, the fire department actually got the door on. So that is already putting that resource that much closer, that much put it on the road.
And I had a couple more questions. Do you know what the response time? I mean, I don't know if you know this, the response time from station six to say this area would be?
About same as ours is here in station six, which is right at six minutes.
And then, um, does our fire trucks, do they have a paramedic on the back?
Yes, ma'am, most of the time, yeah. We are still, and it's a bit later on, we're still working on it. I mean, paramedics staffing, but that's why we sat there and told the council back in, I believe it was August, that our goal is to go to the A E M T. So it's a matter of some drugs, of their schedule of narcotics, that puts that advanced life support skill out there. We've got it through the medical director, we're working to do for EMS on site, training themselves. But that was a former Lawrence Douglas County that did, when we don't have paramedics, back in these are designed to rural areas. We have got time, we get to the hospitals. We're not using all the medic skills on every call. So our goal was going with this is to keep the medics now back on the max seat truck in case we have that more critical call and put the A E M T on handles. If medics needed, they get on the handles, not save for the critical call team. It's just a work in progress.
I have one more comment, question, sorry. And it's more for the language, how this is written. So the very first paragraph on page one of 10, this agreement is made and entered into in this first day between Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department, Bonner Springs, Kansas Fire Department of Fire EMS and Edwardsville, Kansas Fire Department. Should they all be Fire EMS? And then you go to page two, a very top line, and/or renew an automatic and mutual aid agreement for fire department services. But then you go through in the body of this and it, it talks about fire and/or EMS service, fire and/or EMS. I, should that be consistent?
Well, part of that is just titling. So our angels is titled Edwardsville Fire Department. Kansas City, Kansas is named by Kansas City, Kansas is Fire Department. Bonner Springs, we make paramedics, like, since it's a separate channel of service, and it's still licensed underneath the Bonner Springs EMS service.
They're not a fire-based EMS service.
Exactly. But throughout the, the body, it says Fire EMS everywhere. So I, it's just a, maybe a little nitpicky, but it's a contractor and agreement. Just something to look at.
I think it's been vetted legally several times.
Right.
Three different.
Just for consistency.
So a lot of conversation you have, yeah, by human lawyers, so. Not the AI one.
Just a comment, so.
Do you, do you find any, the language that she pointed out, any, they're somewhat consistent.
They're consistent, but it's always best practice, it's the same when you're current different parties or organizations, we can do that. And then like mentioned earlier, the dedication cause, it's always important to get that right. And I would agree that the way we grasp it is to make sure that, that someone takes over care. It's their processes and services are applicable and so the duty to identify would be tricky. But yeah, this went through with all the council. I did have a suggestion that we not necessarily rescind every previous mutual aid agreement that we just provide in this agreement, but if anything is in contract, contradicts any of the previous mutual aid agreements that this would control, that just provides for some consistency if for some reason we're undoing, you know, some sort of working relationship that was covered.
Yeah, I think that leads to your question on the top page, to review automatic mutual aid agreements. Because we had existing signed one, Bonner Springs, we had existing drafted one, had a different guy that was signed by the U G as well, where that language is covered. And then there's side agreements that, you know, Mr. Van brought up, you know, we don't wanna remove all of them because there are agreements that are part of the Eastern Kansas Metro Task Force for the arson, were part of the. So it was also part of that, Mr. Van and one of the other attorneys that we sent there to put in the language, we remove all the existing agreements. Then we have to go back and redo all of our other agreements that are outside of this as well. So that's where that language is staying, you have to do the attorneys cover that.
I did have a couple of questions and, and a comment or two, but this is great. I, I really applaud your efforts and I, I know that you put a lot of effort into this and it's, it's been a long time coming. And I think with Bonner, you know, becoming what they're becoming and having their own fire department, I think it's making it, make it a realization that this is happening. So great job on, you know, working on this and spending all the time on it. I also had the same question as Mr. Malott about who, who the incident commander was gonna be if all three agencies were there. And I, and I believe I heard you say that basically the first one that's there, and that's agreed upon by all, everybody, that, that'll be the incident commander under the NIMs organizational chart.
And a great example would be is, um, in Dallas, in August, at F R I, we sent a man. We have a fire in Edwardsville and my captain, he's got two years of fire captain experience. Maybe second fire by experience, gets into a call that is odd or unique or not really up his, his powerhouse. And then here comes Kansas City, Kansas, battalion chief, it's on a response, it's got 30 years of experience and it's done this more so. That captain said there, it's, here you go. You, you've got more common experience in this. And it happens all the time. It happens in Johnson County, it happens across the nation for these purposes. That there's that situation, somebody's gonna come across something and says, I just don't have the knowledge, skills, abilities, or I completely open them up. And it's all about helping the community and helping the department. So there's a reason for it. Nobody's just gonna come in and say, here you go, I've got a table. Which used to be the case for differing tactical decisions that is current on fires, where I make a tactical decision. And if they're on the same call with us, they're only taking answers from their battalion chief and completely two separate opposites. That will decision, that part of it, though, more than once as well. If they're, when that get caught again, it's not gonna break. So it puts it all back into the first arriving fire official making those decisions. Under the NIMs model, or arriving fire official makes those decisions, so hey, they've been related by somebody in horse race, they've given it up. Orders of creation of more of unified approach. And we see more of a, not so much a fight, man, because it goes outside, goes outside of our ground. We don't look for, you know, yeah.
Right.
It's just got number 18 of page four and number 32 of page six, addresses both of those contracts. So it is an agreement that they all parties agree, incident command system and the NIMs model. So certainly good address.
Yes.
That's perfect. I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's in there. And then I think you mentioned something about the, I know it was in your presentation on the north station, you know, that we've talked about and we've heard from some of our residents. So with this, with this model, with this mutual aid and which, with this agreement, when it goes in place, what's your opinion on our need for that north station?
The main reason that I keep telling council right now, that the north station is not peaceful, it's not to have the call volume to anchor in another million dollars worth of annual operating budget salaries and that's it. That is the biggest factor for less than 6% of the overall call volume of the organization. Now, the same thing I told council before, as growth happens up there and as the bulk goes in, it doesn't mean that we're never gonna have it up there. But if I were to sit there and get told today that, hey, you need to put two people in the ambulance up there, it's gonna cost you X, Y, Z dollars. And understand that that two-person ambulance crew is not gonna be in that station all the time there because the joy of our call volumes down here, as a taxpayer in St. Edwardsville, it's gonna cost me X, Y, Z dollars out of my tax bill every year. So part of fiscal stewardship is giving you information to make the appropriate decision on tax levies. That understanding that the nine people that are required in that facility is an $800,000 hit. That is payroll and salaries right off the bat. I've looked at the budget, I don't see $100,000 of this plan right up to it. It does not exclude us, the bulk that goes in there, saying, we're not gonna staff that station. But it is increasing the capabilities that we have in the north end until we get to that staffing pool. It is taking the closest resources. We are not the closest resources. I mean, it's a three and a half mile ride.
Yeah.
Further you get to 98th and Riverview, further are you are away from here. But it takes that closest resource approach. And that closest resource approach may be four and a half miles away, Kansas City. But it beats a three and a half mile spot because they're going downhill and down one road instead of us trying to traverse up three or four and going back to serve them.
Yeah.
So that's where that comment comes into. It doesn't replace the whole process. It's not gonna replace us as the north end grows. But this helps fill that gap for those concerns for north end residents as it goes in. When that time comes, I'll be the first one to have to walk interstate, put, we're all that center, blood or pocketbook. We'll run out of staff because we've had it in the plus here. Population in the plus of calls and it impacts the resources. But again, for less than six percent of the calls, like in the numbers last spring, you're talking about those 13 medical calls and 24 fire rate calls. That was the entire call volume, the fourth of the month, all the way.
I think, I think your numbers are, are good for us all. No, I mean, it's good for our residents to hear that. I know you and I have talked a little bit about this extensively as well. And I believe you said the equipment wise, we're probably good on, right now, we're good. You know, if we needed to put, you know, equipment up there, but staffing, you know, you, you told me that we were short on staff on filling those and it'd be a, a pretty substantial hit. But I, I think I do remember you saying that if we, if we did make that decision to, to add a second station, that we would be able to, we'd qualify for additional grant money. Is that correct for those funding of those? Is that correct for those funding of those?
Yes, if we were sat there and go push that north station, as long as the safer grants are going to still be funded every year from house appropriation means. It will give us a better chance because we're not retiring, three people, we're retiring nine people, that will be the conversation.
Yeah.
That's why both Kansas City, Kansas City and Ole Miss were awarded grants again this year. And why Kansas City, Kansas City has been awarded more safer grants than we have because we're only, it's been on one person per shift.
Right.
Uh, where the federal priorities are a bit more of the, let's staff the entire station, provide more appropriations that way. That will put us on higher rating caliber because you'll be holding a new station, that would be a bigger fiscal burden on the.
No, that's great, I, I think it's good, again, to have the discussion and have those numbers, you know, on record that way. Just everybody involved has an idea of what that expense is going to be when, when our residents are asking, you know, for that north station to, to be what we're talking about. And I think this mutual aid agreement, I think, once we have a year, two or three years under our belt, we'll see what those call numbers are like, see what that traffic is like. And also see what our north development becomes here in the next two or three, four, five years, uh, then we, we can readdress it.
Part of that's the identity of five, the number of fire departments, the number of places, the thousand times a year when they're going to be doing it. Chief Star, you know, we can't put our staff in up here, we'll all go someplace else. And part of that is, is no, because we only know that we're thinking a thousand, hundred, thirty calls. Going outside.
And again, it's our discretion.
Yeah.
The work is committed to it, it's our discretion, we don't have the resources, we're not going.
Yeah, that's great.
And eight hundred thousand dollars is a, is a big spike into the budget for just the salaries. There's no facility, even if we sit there and look at more facility, it's got to, something's got to have a color works.
Yeah.
And it's going to take a massive or extensive overhaul of that facility because it was never designed for living groups. You have to worry about living arrangements, you have to worry about rest of facilities and cooking facilities, which that station doesn't have. You know, so that's, when we're talking about dollars, we're just talking about if that is budget payroll salary. You know, initially, yes, you can get by splitting something to go with, but as you have more of it, then you've got to have another piece back in for your service. That is a decision that I can try to tell everybody, let's not jump into real quick and let's do it strategically, plan probes. We see that along, so the government body is making decisions going, is this the time that we need to execute step A? Do we execute hiring three in over the next three years, three per year, so we're not hitting that more eight hundred thousand dollars five more times?
The bottom line is it's not financially feasible, that building isn't equipped to hold any of that.
Right.
That's not even the right location as far as we can tell development wise and things. I just think that it, that's really, we're looking five, ten years where we even start studying about probably where we need to be. You know, when it comes to the northern fire station, every economic developer program proposal that comes through my office, I have said, if you're having this land, could you then deed some of it for a fire station in the future? That's one of my first comments. We've got plenty of this acreage, are you going to use it all, is it on this particular area? So that's the first thing we're thinking about is getting the land acquisition first because we know that's just simply not. And it's good to have the conversation and know the information to talk to constituents about, but in a sense, it's just not financially feasible.
Right.
The run volume doesn't support it whatsoever. And I think you made a great point, Mr. Scott, is that we have a potential from a north fire station to come south. And that may add even faster response and better service, just through this agreement alone. So I just think maybe that's more of a future conversation, but right now, everything to say is simply not feasible.
Well, it turns sixes into our north end station for right now.
If any of your residents at the north end ain't closer, great story, we provide if this is signed and that resources available by six, January first, eight o'clock in the morning. They may see the case he picked before they see ours because that is the place. They had to begin with the day, he suggested to any resident of.
Um, that's all I got, just great job again, I appreciate everything you do.
Well, I'd like to, a couple of things, the sixes station is closer, but they always man that station with an ambulance. If, if sixes goes out, somebody gets, fills in there. So it's not like we're going to be without one, you know, they always fill it in on the first thing that happens. Um, I've sat in a dispatch center and when you get a call from KCK, the dispatchers, and then you give them from Edwardsville, you give them from Bonner Springs, it's a mess. Because they have to switch from using this microphone because they have a, they used to have foot pedals. Yeah, where this one's Edwardsville, this one, I can't talk to this person, this will reduce our, uh, response times drastically, I believe. Because there were some times you'd be sitting in there and it's, well, we're trying to dispatch this one, but we can't because we're dispatching this one. So I think, I love this, I wish this would have happened a long time ago because it's, you know, it's, it's been needed for years and years. So I, um, I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation, we, we really appreciate it. I think we've got a little bit of time, this is a lot to talk about and absorb and think through. And so here over the next couple of weeks, if council has any further questions for Chief, go ahead and, and send those. I know he answered a lot of mine this evening and I really, really do appreciate that.
Yeah, I encourage you to send a message and we'll get something to you in writing and answer it this week.
Thank you, Chief. Um, it's also really great to hear that Bonner's staffing up, that's encouraging and pulling the lead of this and that communications and relationships have gone so far between Edwards and Kansas City, Kansas. Um, I know Chief Woodham has, has done a lot of work on this and so we, we really appreciate that.
I'd like to reiterate that importance, so that the three, the three chiefs are getting along so well and they never have in the past. I think it's just commendable that this isn't happening, so I, I give kudos to Chief Woodham because I think he's probably the one that stirred this up.
I had a, a pretty solid working relationship with Chief up.
Yeah, and I, and I know, I know Dennis pretty well too.
That was the result of working the first two years to get to eighteen, agreeing with Doug, because it's so quick, we were beat on West End account.
Well, I think it's, it's awesome, I think that should make a lot of people on the north end feel a little bit more comfortable and secure. That is definitely a concern.
Absolutely, you got it. Item number four, consider authorizing staff to purchase a Vermeer wood chipper ending on a forty-two thousand eight seventy-five forty-four using proceeds from the special sales tax fund.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, you have a four years of background, it does say CE Goodall and he and I look a little different. So, but I'll be present, yeah, he's out today and asked me to take over this, uh, the staff is asking for authorization to purchase this particular wood chipper, which is a twenty twenty-four Vermeer BC one thousand XL wood chipper for forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-four cents using proceeds from the special sales tax fund. And the reason we want to use it from there is in the sense that this will be used for parks and streets and that, that is well qualified to be paid for. That particular fund is very healthy, we didn't spend out of that as much as we expected to this particular year for a number of reasons. And we had a surplus of forty-seven thousand dollars at the end of the year after it was audited, we had more cash than we expected. So it's very healthy, it's well aligned for this particular purchase. Let's talk about history, some years ago, we sold a wood chipper under like a purple whale auction type thing. And the folks came, got it, and they rebuilt it and they're probably using it still today. But there were some expectations that we would replace it because we used it pretty extensively. And when we were out about in recent storms, uh, we were like, well, what's happening? So my new perspective, I asked a lot of questions, I said, well, where's our wood chipper that we should have bought by now? And we hadn't purchased one yet and Director Goodall was saying, yes, we need one. They lease up probably three or four limbs on a pretty regular basis, every three days we have trees down somewhere. And if they're not even cutting some back just because there's emergency situations, maybe it got in the road or something like that. But what we do with them is we put them in the dumpster, that's apparently what we've been doing and we pay somebody to haul those off and that sort of thing. But we don't have opportunities to have any wood chips or even do a service safe for a citizen to say, hey, I got this, can I bring that down there and chip it up or whatever? And offer some opportunities throughout the year that we could bulch up some things, use it at the park and that sort of thing. So that was the full discussion there and I said, please go out, let's look at it, at just the number of wood chipper that we can, because as you might imagine, there's, there's several to choose from. The first priority was safety, as you might imagine, we don't need an ambulance after we use our wood chipper. So what you see here is the one they went with, uh, which is the Vermeer. It has the number one safety features in this, in this kind of line that we were looking at. And within the last week and a half, it dropped the price five thousand dollars. So the price you're seeing here is, is, is the price they're offering and it was five thousand dollars more. You will notice on page two of your background information, there were others that they demoed and they weren't quite as safe. And though it's, uh, that twenty twenty-three more bark or whatever that is, it's thirty-four thousand, yes, but it's not the lowest and best bid. It doesn't have the safety features they were. We have various staff who might be using it, that sort of thing. And what they really wanted to focus on this, uh, this nine inch diameter, so it would feed through, there's some fairly, fairly decent sized limbs and logs and that sort of thing. And so after their evaluation, CE Goodall, our public works director, wrote the background memo and is recommending that purchase for forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-four cents.
I was going to ask about, is there going to be any training on that because they are extremely dangerous?
Yes, so number one, it said safety and then you're getting the ones with the, the one with the most safety features, uh, that we could purchase. And they, they will come out and deliver it, set it up, show them how to use it, all the stuff with hard hats, glasses, all the good stuff will be a part of it, so.
I'm definitely in favor of that, um, I was going to ask, where are you going to have to keep it? Is it going to stay outside in the weather like everything else we've got?
I think there was an answer similar to that from CE, but in tongue in cheek, but I think he's going to, I mean, that's a pretty hefty investment. We're either going to park shelter or even park, uh, shed or up at the north station, those are the two places that we have availability.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I just, cause I have, I've owned Vermeer equipment and you can't hurt them things. I know, you just can't tear them up.
I'm familiar with the Vermeer cheaper, uh, wood chippers as well and they are the best in the industry and they have a lot of safety factors. And you're absolutely correct, Mark, they, they will come out and, and train all of the staff. Mr. Goodall, I think he's out sick today, I, I just kind of traded some emails with him today about this. And my, my question to Mr. Goodall was about, you know, estimated hours of use or how often, you know, he, if he could guesstimate, you know, how many hours a, a year that he would use one? And he really didn't have any, even a good estimate, I think more about because he was sick. But, you know, when I, I did some research as well and, and I had the same thought about, it's, I know we can afford it, where are we going to keep it? And how often are we going to use it, you know? So I did, I did some calling around and there's three different agencies or rental agencies in our area that are fifteen minutes away from us. And the average rental for one of these wood chippers, uh, wood chippers is around three hundred dollars a day or nine hundred and fifty dollars a week. We could do a lot of rentals, you know, until we really can find, you know, how, how badly we need to purchase one. You know, I, I'd almost recommend, you know, maybe for next year, rent, renting one as needed, kind of get an idea of, of usage. And it seems like the first year, you really have a lot of wood chipping to do until you kind of get caught up and then it kind of sits around. And I mean, that's, that's my experience with the different companies, excuse me, that I've worked for. So I'd almost recommend not purchasing right now or maybe tabling this until we can talk to Mr. Goodall till he's feeling better. Maybe if he had an estimate on, on hours of use where that could kind of justify the purchase. Or maybe in twenty twenty-four, just rent as needed and, you know, the different companies, the Sunbelt, Anderson Rental and Girkin Rental. And I've got numbers here and locations, you know, if we want to look at that, but maybe just rent for twenty twenty-four. Kind of see what the hours are, you know, that we use it for and then maybe in twenty twenty-five, make a decision on purchasing. My recommendation. Cause I know they sit and they sit, it seemed like they sit more, you know, they seem, seems like it sits for like ten months out of the year. And then you use it for maybe two months, maybe. And I'm not opposed to buying it, but I, and I know we can afford it, but maybe, maybe just rent to kind of see where we're at on our hourly use.
The way I, the way I visualize it as of last week when they went out and collected three days, tree here, a tree there, whatever, they're, you know, cutting one down. Parks, for example, to include, but you know, we've got lots and lots of canopy over the roads, those sorts of things, so there's lots of trees. So in the sense of, if it's just one project area and then you kind of use it, I, I, I would think that they're, they're putting this stuff in the dumpster on a pretty regular basis. And then they would have an opportunity to stockpile it, spread, you know, hey, citizen, come down and load up your truck and take it to your house if you want some of this chipping, so that sort of thing. Absolutely, I'm not opposed to the, to the rental, I think at some point, is it the same product, are we trained on that product? Are we going to get it this week and next week, right? And what does that cost? Well, as you saw, this one's pull by pickup, they would take their pickup to wherever these places are, we're going to pay some staff to bring it back and then figure out, you know, I think that'd be some of the timing issue.
Yeah.
That's when I visualize it, I visualize, I, I know I've seen up at the north station, they could tuck that away if they needed to and then pull it out with a pickup truck, because that's what they would be doing. For example, we have this, uh, November, December, we, it's just unique to this particular year, but, uh, they're going to be cutting a number of trees from the parks and that sort of thing as part of this project that Chief Woodham announced. And that, uh, that, that would be a perfect use for, for something like that. But I'm thinking on a more practical basis that if it's just, I, I'm thinking the raceway, how many trees prepared to the city of Edwardsville do they have? Just so we can relate to it. It's no contest, Edwardsville wins all day long, there's trees everywhere. So I would just, that would be my only thing is that what does staff have to do to go get one? Is it the same one every time, are we trained on that, right? Are we prepared to use it and is, are we stockpiling and then doing the chipping? You know, that sort of thing, that's the only questions I would have. And see, he isn't here to answer that, but hours wise, number one, I don't know.
Yeah, it's kind of hard.
Probably been long enough that he could probably put some time, if we haven't used a wood chipper, we've been putting it in the dumpster. So I don't know if we can compare apples, apples really in that situation.
Yeah, I think.
That would be my comment.
No, 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 I appreciate that and my experience was more was when I was with Pratt County Howard Department. And we, you know, we had the entire county in a, a Vermeer wood chipper, a matter of fact, worked great and there's quite a bit of maintenance, you know, extra blades that you've got to have and, and actually three sets of blades. You know, one at the sharpener, one's on the unit and then one's on the, you know, in the shop ready to go on, you know. So there's just, there's some, you know, maintenance things that need, need to know with, with a, uh, equipment like that. But, um, it, it's just my experience, like I said, I, I would, I think, you know, if, if you could plan, which we can, just like you said, you know, you, a project coming up. You, you call either one of these companies and you see the availability and they have one from a six inch on up to twelve inch. And, you know, it's, I don't know, just a thought.
Were those Vermeers?
Huh?
Were they the Vermeer?
Uh, yeah, uh, I believe they were, I think, I think, um, I believe it was Anderson had a Vermeer, yeah. I know at least one of them did.
We had a pile of brush and big logs at park just within the last two or three weeks. They obviously came off of streets and so forth, how do they get them from there to the park?
You mean it's?
Well, there were some big logs down there, I mean, like, you know, twelve foot long down by that dumpster where the sand pile is. How did they get them from wherever they came from down there? Cause I was curious and then it disappeared.
Time, I don't know is the right answer.
Well, and then it disappeared, did it go in that dumpster and we paid, we paid that extra to have that.
The process described to me is they're putting them in the dumpster and having someone pay to come and get them out.
Have we contacted the UG to ask them how much it would cost to put it in their landfill right up the road where they take trees and debris?
It would be the yard waste area.
No, that's, go ahead.
No, I, I think that what they've been doing is they load it wherever they load it from, to include assistance once in a while from the fire department, cut them out, get them out of the street, get them out of the roadway, whatever. And then they, then they're just putting them in the dumpster and have, I don't know if they're calling if it fills up and they call them for a special dump or what, what they're doing.
Oh, that's so sad.
I know that original wood chipper we had was in like nineteen ninety-three or ninety-four, we bought it because we had trees fall down on Newton. And we, I mean, it literally was, you could not pass Newton Street and I think Sowers probably remembers that. We bought that chipper and it hung around here for a while and then it disappeared. Because I've asked frequently, you know, where'd that chipper go that we had and I guess you sold it on.
We did, it was purple land, I remember. We did, it was purple and I remember standing right in front of it while the person picked it up.
I, I think, I'm gonna throw the motion out there to approve the purchase of the chipper and just see where it falls. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Vermeer Great Plains chipper in the amount of 42,875.
Before anybody seconds that, I wanna add that the, the drawback to renting one is you, you do have to plan it out. And if with the weather coming up that we're, could be having with ice. There will not be a brush chipper available to rent. You know, there, everybody's gonna have them rented out, you know, with the ice storm and tree limbs down everywhere. So that is a major drawback to renting, especially one in the, in the winter time. Um, so I guess that we just gotta figure out if, if.
I'll just throw it out there.
Well, I, I, I do think in, and Mr. Malat has mentioned it over the years, some equipment investment, you know, when, when we say that, hey, we have this public works department, what kind of things that we want. We could certainly use this as a, a citizen service where we could also rent one and plan for those events. But we could somewhat on a limb, go get it from our shop and take it to wherever we need it and use it. That's convenience, that sort of thing. But it's an investment and we have to take care of our investment. So once again, we're back to where do we store it? I think you have room for that object to store up there. So what would be stored inside, uh, from what C E Goodall had told me? So I would say that if this goes to that kind of somewhat positive path, even some patching equipment and some of those things where our smaller crews can handle that equipment. I think that's a positive investment.
I'll second.
We have a motion, Councilman Malat, a second by Councilman Bishop. Will the clerk please cover him?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Moving on to item number five, city manager report.
I have one thing of note, and C E, my message to you, uh, but I'll explain it in a little more detail, uh, though I don't have extraordinary amount of detail. But I try to follow up with it. We have, as you, as I mentioned in my correspondence, we received a note, a letter from the U five government. From this county administrator's office about the yard waste and the household hazardous waste facilities and the dumpster days of Kansas City campus. Essentially, their study that they commissioned suggested that the citizens of Edwardsville are not paying for that. And it's not a county service. So, and they've notified Bonner Springs as well. So in the short and simple of it, they want to implement a voucher system that when you take your stuff there at either one of those locations or participate potentially in their dumpster days and or automatically get billed for our dumpster house. Uh, that there will be a voucher system. The mayor and I have communicated about, uh, getting a, a unified message maybe, but what we need is more information. So that's why I called today, I haven't received, uh, any, I just recently got this, I haven't received a call back from his office. And I'm hoping to say, well, how is it supposed to work? Cause this nicely typed letter doesn't explain how that would work. As, as I, I, I just submitted it to you folks with the mayor, I, I copied the letter because, you know, I don't, I don't know what drove. It may be a cost saving measures that they're studying, some of the services that are provided and looking to say, okay, the folks out west, Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. If you're not a part of the KCK residential trash pickup and that sort of thing, you're not paying for these things. And it's not a windout county effort. The questions would be, we would like to know how it's not a county landfill effort. Right? That would be the first question. How would the voucher system work? Is it that each citizen is driving up their dumping? They fill out a form or whatever and then we're billed for it and then we pay for it or what, how it's going to work? We just don't know, there's more questions than answers here. But certainly the first top two or three is what's the process? And oh, by the way, is there something you could show us that says that we've somehow incorporated in that to be incorporated in city limits of Kansas City, Kansas? As a city function and not a countywide function? Cause that would be my question.
And I, I read it a little bit, um, into it and saying that it was incorporated in their trash service fees. So I think we'd wanna see that within their waste management contract. Um, my response, uh, with, which Chief Mathies knows is, okay, now do pilot. And now do the county engineer and now do all the things that we're paying for and we don't get one bit of service from the unified government for. Um, so I think, okay, that's fair. Let's apply it across the board. If we don't get the service, we shouldn't be paying for it. Is more along the lines of my response. So, um, we'll, we'll work toward that and we'll see exactly what their expectation is. And then, um, if it's fair, let's apply it across the board, going both directions.
On this, is there more note on that, Mayor?
That's all I've got for.
We're investigating and we will report back. We promise, we're gonna have, you know, by front here. Uh, the next piece of that is, well, we're moving.
Could I see a copy of that letter? Could you email me a copy of that? Just email it to me.
Oh, you want me to email it to you?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to look at that.
All of us.
It's got U G letterhead on it.
It does, oh, yes.
Oh, okay, well, it's Kansas City, Kansas that's doing this.
It does say county administrator's office, so more complete.
Just saying. And I, I also, I've taken debris in there, you know, and dumped it. And when you have, uh, like 16, 20 foot trailers going in there full of tree debris. I mean, it's businesses that are dumping in there, you know, there's a lot of things to look at. I take a little bitty trailer, you know, with some trees and you've got people unloading, you know, gigantic oak trees and all of a sudden.
Hopefully next time we can help you ship those up.
That's city property.
Well, you're a citizen and I, I mean, that's, we hope that.
If we can work some kind of a deal and then I'll.
Sonny does it.
We could get in, yeah, we can get into the pile of mulch, pick up, load and come and get your mulch in. I mean, you know, yeah, that's a good idea. I think we need to do things, look into things like that.
We're, we're not on for the day after Thanksgiving weekend, uh, that meeting's mechanical, very, very light agenda. The mayor and I communicated several times, we just said they could have a meeting just to have one. So that does mean where there's gonna be a little bit of, uh, there's a number of smaller items that will come to the next meeting in December. It's the only one we'll have, but, uh, that typically the annual, uh, budget amendments, simple papers with math. State needs some of that stuff done. Uh, but there'll be a few other things, I, I don't expect it to overwhelm, try to control that agenda as much as I can. That's, I'm saying that as a pledge so that we didn't cancel meetings just to get, uh, about marathon meetings. So we're gonna try real hard to keep those to the, to the thing. We have a fee schedule and a few other things similar to that, just business stuff that we'll have to take here. That's my report. You have my correspondence for Friday or Thursday-ish. And, uh, another meeting, uh, I know, uh, I, I, I did report on, uh, our city attorney was out of town. So we didn't really have an update on the pilot and the letter to the attorney general. By the end of the week, he will have a report to me and I'll submit it to you as soon as I have. And, uh, I know they are working, going out of town. Again, I don't know what this guy's doing traveling all the time, but, uh, that's, that's my report, man.
Ironically, with the, the challenges that we had tonight with our sound and audio, or maybe it's just the audio. Um, I know some of our public residents have also made the comment that our sound system and, and audio is, or in the video is lacking. Challenging, I don't know if it's, is it, is it our equipment? Is it the network or what do you, what do you think?
Well, it's a little bit of everything. If you're talking about the audio, we've already discussed that a little bit, that, that machine just right below, that soundboard right below you, doesn't have any more capacity for some of the microphones, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, we just have to investigate the, I know when we broadcast, there's a, there's a small screen and it isn't getting every one of you on a big screen, that sort of thing. We're still trying to figure out how to do that. And it may be just, say the, the type of video conferencing that we're using, maybe different brand, that sort of thing. Uh, partly it is, is, you know, Sean Paul's new to that as well. And, and I haven't even seen some of that. So we haven't really investigated how we can make improvements on the microphone stuff. We may be at capacity, no matter what we do, even if we expand the board because of the size of the room and we have the speakers in the ceiling. It may cause some audio feedback problems. So we would have to bring in, uh, our professional who did this equipment and that's on our radar. It's been on our radar a couple of months now. We're just kinda settling in some other things. Maybe at the turn of the year, we'll have, you know, funding resources and that sort of thing and get some quotes about how we can do it better. Uh, this is pretty static, it has a, a video camera, uh, doesn't get any, if you're presenting from back here, it's not picking up any of that. So I think there's some limitations, just we need professionals to come in and say, this is what it's gonna take to improve what you have and expand upon it and make it better. Or if it's more about that video conferencing piece as well, so getting all that kinda coordinated. We do have somebody who can do that, that did it before.
Well, I think it's important. I, I think, I don't know how many people, you know, was concerned about it, but I think it's, it is important for everybody that can't get to our meetings to be able to see it and, and hear it. And I think it does have some validity of having a camera back in the back to see the, you know, other presenters or I think, I think we, it'd be nice if we could get a quote or look at what we have and kinda move forward with trying to get our systems updated and kinda get caught up with the times.
It was, it was noted on our project sheets, we just don't include it for the formal, the big projects, but this is something we talked about, I think, really early on in the last six, July. That we've had notes, we've had issues. We, we encourage the citizens to report back what, what issues they might be having. We have fiber connection here, so we should not have any.
There you go.
Problems other than our internet service provider spectrum. We're at their mercy.
No, I know what you're talking about there. And, and so just kinda along with that, with our systems, um, I, I'd like for us and the mayor to, to reconsider. You know, allowing counsel and or our lawyer and or our staff to comment after our public has spoken. Um, I, I think the answer was, and I think you asked a question earlier, you know, when you, two years ago, when you came on and, you know, can we respond? And I think the response was because of liability concerns, we're urged not to comment. But I, I think in the grand scheme of things and with our public taking time out to be able to come down and, and ask questions and, and for us to be able to hear what they're talking about and they're concerned about. If we, if we have an answer or even if we don't have the answer, at least consider making that comment. I, we don't have your answer, we hear you. But, you know, the mayor could direct whoever to, to find the answer for whoever's talking or whatever the question is. I think, you know, the communication needs to be two-way. And when you look at the, you know, definition of good communication, it's, it's two-way. And, you know, when you, when our public is coming in and making comments, it just feels off, you know, that we can't respond to them, even if we don't know the answer. At least say, we hear you, we understand. Josh, could you look into that? Mr. Mathies, could you look into that? Uh, just something along that line, I think it'd be beneficial.
Well, those are things you can say and has been said, hey, staff, could you research that? Could you get an email and do that? And that's very appropriate. I think the mayor hit it on the head previously and I'm, I'm just talking from a layperson, you mentioned liability. Put that word aside because that doesn't fit here. It's not about liability, it's about the agenda that we set. This is a business meeting of the city. Now, if you wanna have a side conversation with people who can't speak, you could do that as a, all day long in your, in your role. You can have those conversations and you can have those conversations now to go on official record. Hey, I, I thought about the comments that this person developed this area like this, you know, they, they come in and comment. You could say it at this particular time and say, I agree with you and that citizen, let's, let's see what we can do. You could say, staff, go and do these things and make the research piece of it. But you don't want to change the formal adopted agenda. Because now you have, you have a rule of three minutes. And the reason that is, is you don't wanna be here 10 hours of one person dominating your conversation.
Right.
So this is a business meeting of the city run by the mayor, voluntarily ordinance wise, this is how it works, right? And so that agenda's set and then adopted, right? So that's the formal process. It's not we're trying to exclude, but it's not a workshop, it's not a citizen forum. Those are other venues. So that, that's kind of, not to be curt about it or overly frank, but in the sense, there's no liability in it.
Okay.
People come with suggestions all the time. You can say, okay, we'll take that in advisement, staff, if you do that, that's very appropriate to do. I just think we, correct me if I'm wrong, we try, if we allow that, then we're, we're changing the agenda because it's not an agenda item that they may be presenting for. They may comment on an agenda item, say number six, I want you to vote yes, they could do that all day long. So, and you can consider that what they say. So does that kind of explain it? I, I think you hit it on the head, that mayor, that we don't wanna change the formal agenda. I know it's awkward, I know it's tough, but that's kinda how business should be done, Robert's rules and under how this thing should be.
Yeah, I think that does help because I, I, the way I understood it, we couldn't say any, any comments. So if we can say, we hear you and we can say, you know, if one of you can, you know, check that out for us, get the information, you know, for the whoever's talking, I think it'd be very helpful.
Say thank you, would you like staff to look into that? The mayor typically takes off that.
Okay, that's perfect. That, that helps, that definitely helps. That's all I got, thank you.
Chief Woodham, thank you for all your hard work. Um, I think a lot of council members up here recognize all your hard work and your possible leadership. Getting Bonner and KCK and Edwardsville together to collectively work on a windout county mutual aid agreement. There's so many differences between the cities and windout county, that's a different discussion. But for residents up, uh, in the northern end of Edwardsville, I think how you explained station six, that is much better than what we would have right now, correct? And maybe we'll have to, I, I'm sure you will, monitor the next several years, see how the calls go. And next year especially, see how this new aid goes. Hoping and because like you said, the end of the day, it's our windout county residents that top priority. So my applause to you and all who are working to make this a success. Christmas tree lighting, now we, is that gonna be before the next meeting? It is. Oh, you were probably gonna mention that, so. I know, well, you would, you, right, I don't wanna take anybody, so I'll let, pardon me? It is hard to be last, so I'm, right, that's all I have. Thank you, I know, I'll let everybody else talk, thank you.
Uh, a few little items, Chief Woodham, thank you so much. And I know sometimes I say things the way I should, but I'm gonna say that I've never seen cooperation between the three fire departments that we're seeing right now. And that's got to be a good thing, it's just gotta be a good thing. Thank you so much for the work on that. Mark, I was gonna ask, uh, I have some residents and church members from the St. Martin in the Field Church. What's going on with the negotiations for the property to get to the historic Black Cemetery?
Well, we gotta be careful, but they want too much money for the property.
Is it dropped or are we still negotiating?
Um, we pretty much said, there was a time, there, there was discussion of them beating that over to us. And that moved into money. And that money is too much. And, uh, that's where we're at, kinda left it in their hands to say, I received a message from them sometime ago. I responded back to them saying, uh, we would consider, uh, beating that over, uh, but this price is just not something that we're gonna consider.
Yeah, I'm not a, a real estate agent by any means, but I think that we still should pursue that and try and figure out some kind of a, of a way of getting access to that. Cause I mean, you could be on, going on private property and they've always been good at, anyway, that's. The, I was gonna mention about the, uh, the recycle situation and which we've already discussed. But I think it's kind of a slap in the face if they say you can't bring your, your debris in here, you know, I, that's gotta be looked into.
Yeah, I understood that one way or the other, someone's gonna pay for it.
Well, it's got U G written on the letterhead, you know, and I mean, I, I look at those little things like that and they wanna blanket it out as U G. Well, if it's KCK, put KCK on the letterhead and say, you're not, you know, you're not, we're the little brothers that don't ever get what we should get. Uh, my head, um, I'm not gonna mention silent crossings. I guess I just did. There's still a wire down on 102nd at 15th Street. It's been down for a year or so, maybe more. It needs to be put up.
Mr. Goodall, contact whoever owns that and we're at their mercy.
I think it's just, it's number one, it's unsightly and I don't know, it could be dangerous, I don't know. But I would have to, I would have to say that needs to be fixed. And has the CPPS board ever had any discussion about what to do with the property that we purchased at the, next, uh, Candy's Corner up here across from the bank?
I do recall from just a briefing at that meeting and, uh, Margaret, Trevor was there, uh, that that. that that, there was mention of maybe even, maybe on surface of Dog Park or something. There's, there's green space there. There, it's not incorporated into our master park plan because that came after, of course, of us acquiring that property. But what kind of green space was the discussion? I think it was introduced, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's discussion, and I know they have a meeting this week. And hopefully that will be, we'll get some guidance on what they would like. I know staff was a little bit steering that there's potential for a little bit of dog park over there because of the way that the property is laid out and with some simple parking. So that was at least one idea. Again, there's an overlay related to that particular piece of property that we saw presentations over the years about, you know, what was going to happen in that whole area. And I believe our city planner had looked at that previously about what, what kind of space that would be used at. Our guidance was, talk to the, talk to the board and see what they thought about it. And one of the kind of, this looks like a pretty good idea, was a somewhat of a dog park, a green space dog park.
I think there should be some, a little bit of parking put in there somehow, some city parking because there's little problems with the bank, you know, allowing people to park there for the Grill Thirty-two and for, is it Candy's Corner? Is that the name of that place there?
Oh, the new, the new shop, yes.
Eclectic shop.
Right.
But she's kind of needing some parking too there, and I think if we've got a business down there, we need to kind of help them a little bit.
I think we tread lightly on building public.
I understand that.
Parking for a private.
I, I understand that.
So we would build a parking for stall by stall for the dog park, right?
Right.
Could do that.
Should there be overflow?
Ways around that, but I think you got to be good neighbors.
But they are working on it. They answered yes.
Thank you for that. I think I'm done.
Councilman Bishop?
Yeah, I would, I think we should, and I mentioned this before, I think we should look into now that Isaac Groves has been inducted into the Hall of Fame. I think we should look into buying his house. Because before, it's deteriorated so bad that we have to just tear it down, and then that's a part of our history. You know, and plus, we own what we could. It's in the land bank. There's a chunk right here. It's owned by somebody. We had to tear the house down. But all this is all land bank. I mean, we could figure out a way of incorporating something, you know, to honor his memory. Because I mean, without him, we wouldn't be here.
Wait a minute. Who is it?
Isaac Groves, the Potato King.
Julius.
Julius, oh, Julius. I'm sorry, Isaac Groves.
What are you talking about?
Isaac, he's one of my salesmen.
Who are you talking about?
Yeah, it's one of my salesmen. I'm sorry. Julius, that's who I'm talking about. I'm sorry.
Julius, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I, before, it's too late, you know, because I mean, the house is, it's in pretty bad shape.
Would it be somewhat of a, just a historical marker, a museum of some sort, something that could go in?
Yeah, I think we could get some funds from the state, you know, the Historical Society and, you know, I'd be willing to volunteer some of my time, you know, fixing it up and everything.
Mark, where is the house?
Ninety-eighth and K thirty-two on the northwest corner behind that branch brick house there. It's a stone house. It's kind of small. It's not like his mansion he lived in.
Northeast.
Northeast corner. And we own some of that. We could own some of that property, you know, and something, you know, just, you know.
Across from that car lot, that old car lot?
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's right across.
So is there, is there momentum, some consensus that we should spend some time maybe researching being somewhat of a real estate deal and buying land bank land and things like that? Is there, is there some interest?
He makes all the money.
Mark, I pointed at Mark.
I, like, I don't know, just because it's getting, and I was over there the other day. I didn't go in it, but I was just pulled up to it, was kind of looking at it, and, you know, I just think something should be done, you know.
Is it for sale?
Well, Mike, Mike and Webb and I talked about it one time, and he said that they, people have approached him about purchasing it one time. Mike did, and his family was just not really too keen on selling it. But it, I mean, it's, you know, he said, without him, we wouldn't be here, you know?
Certainly, we could, we could, you know, track down, maybe, maybe look at whatever. They've done some research in the past on the same question. Staff could do some research, maybe reach out to the folks and look at, you know, there's some land bank property right there as well. We could want to maybe incorporate that, so it's getting pushed on. If that's something you're interested in, we could sort of put the time through.
Sure, you've got the time. I mean, if it's not too much, too much.
I mean, I'll check with, I mean, I could check, I could do some research under myself with the Historical Society. Because we, we deal with them sometimes.
Certainly, he's only had some access to certain records and things like that, making these reports and stuff, so if that's.
Well, I think we need to, when, when we're hearing about our, we're getting audited. We've got below our, our marks that recently lowered our, our credit score. We, we just talked about a cemetery that we're, you know, in the middle of discussing. We just talked about a park space right by the railroad potentially. I, we want to make sure we're not spreading ourselves so thin. So I, I do think that we probably need to prioritize some of these projects and say, okay, which direction do we need to head in instead of pursuing three different potential?
Absolutely.
Not even economic development, but a purchase.
I might suggest that this would be a parks and open space type project. Maybe they are the ones we send this to and say, what would you prioritize this or this or these other, other park investments? Maybe that's something we could do if that's your direction, Mayor. I'm open to whatever we might do. At least you would have a community board, kind of, kind of, here's the idea. What do you, what do you guys think about this? Is this a priority this particular year coming up, that sort of thing? We don't know any pricing. We don't know what it's going to take once we own it. What do we have to do immediately to salvage it, that sort of thing? So there's, there's certainly lots of work. But that's at least an idea. We could take it to the CPPS board as a, do you think this would be a priority for the?
That would be a good idea, because I think all of these would fall, I mean, they're all great ideas. We just need to kind of pick where to go so we're not in limbo on three things with all of these other things going forward. We can't, we don't have the capacity to staffing or financially to do that. So, and, and do you think that would be, okay, yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Bring it to CPPS board and have them kind of prioritize some things and see what, what direction are we wanting to move in.
Okay, I believe you. Should be in tomorrow. He and I will have a discussion, so we can kind of leave that discussion. Go, discuss maybe where finances might be and that sort of.
Yeah, I would think we would turn it over to the park board anyway.
Yeah. Believe we ordered some signage at some point. I don't know if we followed through with that, but there was some deciding that we were going to put the Groves sign up or something to that effect.
That was.
Whether or not we ordered that.
That was about a year ago.
Yeah, it's been a little while.
Right.
That's all I got.
Councilman Adcox?
Um, just thank you for the work on the automatic aid. I'm looking forward to it. It seems really good. It seems good for everybody involved. I'm just thankful that all the departments are getting along and look like they're going to have a good, working, respectful relationship together.
And Councilman Malat, headquarter.
I wanted to mention, Mark, maybe could you, on that report that, or the inter-local agreement that we're doing, mutual aid agreement, could they put a little blurb in the hot shot to let the citizens know what's hot on the table right now? And that, I think that would be a good idea. With that passing of a sales tax, which is going to help quite a bit, and with, with what we're doing with the fire department, what Chiefs do with the fire department, I think that public needs to know that right now.
We will feature it.
I mean, beyond, you know, beyond just what we're doing right here. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to keep it brief. December fifth, mark your calendars, please. We have the Edwardsville Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting Event coming up. Should be a great time. We have more community involvement than ever before. Edwardsville Choir's coming. We will have the Edwardsville, I'm sorry, Edwardsville Bonner Springs High School Drum Line. And then just got confirmation today that we'll have some of the performing arts students participating as well. So it'll be a really big year. Hope to have a great turnout. So everyone mark your calendars for that. I am probably strangely excited about the Yard of the Season coming to pass. That will be announced here probably within the next twenty-four hours, I'd imagine. On Facebook, we had a Yard of the Season competition for the fall, and folks submitted their nominations to the CPPS board who picked our winner for the fall season. That will be announced on Facebook. They'll get a gift card and a little sign in their yard for a week. And then we're going to approach the Christmas season and have a Yard of the Season for that as well. So just to put that on everyone's radar as they're probably putting up their Christmas lights this week. We had the Edwardsville Mobile Pantry last Saturday. Thankfully, we had really good weather considering it was November. We served over sixteen thousand pounds of food to over, well, to eight hundred and forty-six people. And that's including the high-rise and sucking up our local pantry, Von Trent. Since you brought up the, the unified government, I will just take a little second to let folks be aware that we do have the meetings, community meetings coming up. You can find those dates on Facebook, the Unified Residents of Windout County page. We have an Edwardsville meeting, November twentieth. There are several other meetings throughout the Windout County area. Feel free to come to any of those meetings. You just sign up online. We would love to hear how you feel like the unified government is working for you. Thank you.
Went longer than forty-five. I thought it was going to be two.